In the morning, I call this meeting of the Board Finance and Operations Committee to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. And viewers may watch the live Board Committee meetings online at D cap dot net backslash board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Welcome to May. I will open the meeting to public comment. And this, well, the committee has set aside this time for public comment. Julie, do we have any public comment? Obviously not. I would like to, on items that are action items, I know this is maybe a pain, but I'd like to just do a vote on these if we can. So I have some recorded record of where everybody stood in case we have questions later on. Procedural items, traffic committee meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bits and services or purchases? I'm going to defer to Jesse Houghton on the middle school STEM equipment and supplies.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So first, I just want to talk a little bit about where this, the funds for this purchase are coming out of. The funds for this purchase are coming out of our 99H grant, which is a grant that we write every year to the state. And the state says this grant aims to provide competitive funding for districts, intermediate school districts and non-public schools to enhance educational opportunities in STEM fields through robotics competition. And then this grant restricts us that the funds can only be used for coaching stipends, which we award each year to our robotics coaches, technology, equipment for classrooms, and then it supports the registration of their fees. So know that this purchase, the funds that we're using to make this purchase, we can't use those funds for anything else but STEM-related educational activities and things. In case folks were wondering on that amount, Christine, do you have the amount there? I'm sorry.
Yep, it is sixty-three eight twenty, which has a ten percent contingency.
Okay, awesome. So these funds are funds to be used at our middle school robotics programming on both of our larger traditional middle schools. The teachers there came to me when we knew we had these funds and needed to spend these funds. These funds also have a restriction. They are not allowed to be rolled over after August, or sorry, September 30th of 2025. So we have to spend these funds by then, or we give them back to the state. So these teachers came to me and they said that they really wanted to update all of their robotics materials for two main reasons. The materials just themselves were a little outdated and the organization that they live under is the competitions were a bit outdated. They felt that the electronics were unreliable and they spent more time trying to fix the robotics and fix those pieces versus teaching and interacting with students. And also, there's no local competitions for the robotics that our middle school kids were using or have been using. So instead, they wanted to do a full revamp of the funds because we had this kind of chunk of funds that we had carried over from last year and then our new amount allocated that we had to spend allowed us to kind of really explore what else was out there. And so these funds will go towards the Vex V5 version. Their coding platform is more seamless, the teachers both say, and they'll be able to make the switch really well. They have, there's already an active community right now nearby in Traverse City with different schools that use the same programming, so competitions will be easier for our kids. And they both really feel that this amount investing into both of our middle schools will allow our instructors to collaborate and have programs that are more equitable at both middle schools. This is run as an elective course for our students. And we run, depending on the enrollment, three to four to five sections of this robotics at both middle schools.
Jess, what's the total amount of the grant that's available? I mean, how much of this have we now spent?
So the way this grant works is we write it for each team in the district that has got our competitive robotics program. Part of the grant is already stipulated for stipends, which the district does have to match up to twenty, or twenty-five percent is the minimum we have to match for that stipend part. And then the rest goes to materials. So it's like two pieces to the grant. The grant amount that we get distributed every year varies based on how much money the state has put into that pot and how many schools apply for the grant, right? So the, what we have seen for this pot of money, we actually have seen the total amount decrease the last few years, and we've seen more and more schools put in for the grant. So this year, I would say, instead of getting the full fifteen hundred per coach, we got a little closer to twelve to thirteen hundred dollars. We as a district then compensate and make up for the difference of that. And for supplies, it really has varied between some years we'll get a few thousand and then some years we'll get all the way up to twenty-two thousand, twenty-five thousand. But we have this extra funds because we had quite a bit carried over from last year that went unspent. And because of that, I went to the robotics teachers early on this year and said, hey, you guys have like, I think fifty-two thousand dollars of that is carryover money from last year that wasn't spent. And like, there's some urgency to spend it by the end of September, or we just give it back to the state.
So last year it rolled over and this year it doesn't, or is?
So what will roll over this year will be the allocation we got this year, which I think was closer to twelve to fourteen thousand.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Well, I mean, I appreciate the equitable educational opportunity, so, so thank you. And I'm happy to hear that they cover registration fees so that the kids don't need to pay to participate.
Correct. The grant covers that, yep.
That's great. And is there any goals of bringing this program to elementary schools?
Yeah, yeah, we've done, Dr. Van Wagner and Dan Tiesworth and I have talked a lot about that. And the elementaries can apply for this grant funds too. Ninety-nine H does extend to them. It's a smaller amount for those. There's, there's a little bit of us just figuring out all the logistics. We need personnel. It's not built into the day. What's nice about middle school is it functions as a class during the day, right? Where at elementary, it's outside of the day, which then brings us into some more logistical complications with staffing and stuff too. But Dr. Van Wagner and Dan and I have talked a lot about how can we bring this into the day for more kids? How can we make this an equitable program?
Something when we met with the Manufacturers Association, I brought up to them about we could use some funding, we could use some help to be able to do that. So Dan and I, Dan, I met with Lego League.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
To have a conversation on, on that and trying to see if there's a way for us to establish maybe school teams and maybe if there's not quite enough at a school to combine to be able to have something. So that's, that's definitely what we're exploring. And I did have one local business come up to me, so they're willing to do some, someone would like to meet, so we're gonna set that up and do that.
At the middle school, these are for credit courses or?
They're courses that count for pupil accounting purposes, yes. I mean, credit is kind of an interesting term at middle school, right? Because you don't really acquire credit till the high school. But yes, they're courses that count. They're like in the VPAA, Visually Performing Arts category there, yes. But it's always nice to have more electives for kids, right? You know, like it is an elective, but it's nice to have different electives, a variety of things. Some kids, this is, like, this is their jam and this is their biggest part of their school day, is being able to come and like, do things like this, so.
Well, and considering we just built these two beautiful manufacturing and innovation labs, great to start them younger to then get them interested to continue into high school, so, yeah.
And I'm assuming there's continuity between what's taught at the high school level and with the middle school kids again?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
All right, any other questions? You have a motion to move this onto the board?
I move that we move this to the full board. Or move the sixty-three eight hundred and twenty thousand plus ten percent contingency to the full board for approval.
Do you want to then consent?
Yes, I'm consent, move to consent.
I second that. All those in favor say aye.
I'm used to voting on this stuff, Scott.
I know.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, just in case somebody wants down the road to know how everybody felt about this. All right, technology, cell phone boosters, Evan.
Good morning. Yes, so first project bringing to you today is for two different cellphone signal boost solutions. One going to be at our West Senior High site, the other at our Transportation and Facilities building. What we did is we investigated kind of the problems of really poor cell signal in these areas and looked around at all the different opportunities and solutions that we can do for what's essentially basically a cell antenna to install and then pull throughout the building to boost those signals where they're not. The West Senior High site had a priority because it's also our primary reunification center. So we really wanted to make sure that that central location where you can see they've designed that map around it in the packet is to ensure that anyone kind of in the center of that building, which is a large dead zone, will hopefully be receiving a much stronger cell signal from any provider. This is provider agnostic. So that one is a far more robust system that will be professionally installed at the Transportation and Facilities building. The WeBoost is another product that does essentially the same thing. It's a little less intensive in terms of the need for a full-blown design. It's really just an installation and making sure we're putting those antennas throughout the spaces where we feel like there's lack of signal and there's less square footage in those buildings that we're trying to cover. So you see a difference in price there with the WeBoost solution only being seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and that's installed. Meanwhile, the Nextivity solution that we'll be installing at West Senior High is eighty-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents, which includes the professional installation services and the equipment. Once both of these systems are installed, there's no recurring or ongoing costs. It's just like putting in an antenna that hopefully will boost that signal for us moving forward. No need to license anything. And just, we get a, at least a year warranty on the Nextivity for them to come adjust any sort of directional antenna they might need to point. But they've already done site surveys at West Senior High, so they feel confident that they'll be able to place those antennas, which will be outside the building, bringing that signal in and then broadcasting it throughout that central point of West Senior High, making that a much better cell reception site. So two different systems, hopefully be planned on being installed over the summer. The total purchase is not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars, which would include a ten percent contingency.
Just for a little bit of background, this is one of the last remaining items that we really struggled with when we had secure education consultants come in and do an overall facility assessment. We've really struggled over the years with how to deal with the cellphone connections because we don't own a cellphone tower and don't have any say in where they're located. We've done a lot of things with adding access points throughout buildings, thinking that might help. And we've really just come to, we need a professional to take a look at this and figure it out. So this is kind of our segue into kind of phase one of piloting, what we think might work. We do have many other buildings that we're going to have to address. East Middle School will be the next one. But as Evan said, this is new and instead of spending a lot of money on something we're not a hundred percent sure will actually solve our problems, we thought we'd take a stab at a couple of facilities that we have the most issues at.
And we know we're successful. How, like?
We'll, we'll know immediately because the staff using their cell phones in the building, like the principal at West Senior High can't use his cellphone in the building. He has to exit the building, so.
We'll know.
That makes sense.
It'll work or it won't, right?
I didn't know it wasn't working.
It's, it's really bad. And then facilities, like, you know, when I'm out there, I have to walk outside to make a phone call. It's really bad.
Are there some minimum performance specs that these folks guarantee in terms of performance?
Yeah, so they don't have, say, a minimum actual number of performance spec, but before the installers would leave, they would confirm that all the different carriers are provided a boosted signal inside our affected area. So they'd be testing and wouldn't be leaving until they make sure that equipment's functioning properly and that they're actually seeing a signal gain with those cell services.
And there's a guarantee on this, or is that warranty of that?
It's one year, correct?
Yeah, for the Nextivity one, it's a one year for all parts and service for them to come out. If any of the equipment were to fail, they'll come replace it for free and/or if we need any sort of adjustments or noticing some lag in performance, they can come on and help us make those adjustments.
And if the equipment's not working the way it was specified to, they would replace or upgrade?
Yes.
Okay.
Find another solution, essentially.
There's probably, this is probably the, there's probably not an upgrade at this point, right? Like, this is probably.
I mean, short of buying our own cellphone towers and strategically place them, we're kind of at the hands of people that actually have those connections to the cellphone towers.
And what is, just, I'm catching up, what's the policy at the senior high, at West, for instance, on student use of cell phones?
Oh, you lost so much fun, Scott.
Let's talk about cell phones. Yes, okay. Students at the high schools have to check in, to check in their cell phones at the beginning of every hour. We've standardized the process, so it's not about one teacher or one classroom. There's a standard. It's the same at all three of our high schools. There's a CADDU. Kids have an assigned number. They put their phone up there. The kids can see their phone the entire time. They just can't access it during instructional time. They could have it in between passing, at lunch, before and after school. And I will say, because we educate kids on why and we're really upfront with as long as you follow the policy, you can have access to it at all these points during the day. We've actually found a lot, and this year's been even better, and we go in classrooms. We do counts and stuff and check.
It's how some of the teachers actually take attendance too, is like if the cellphone's in the pocket, so.
Still not perfect. We have kids that, you know, say, I don't have mine today and, and keep it in a bag or whatever, but we're continuing to get better, better and reinforcing.
It's definitely less with kids going to the bathroom and then like trying to text each other to meet up. It sounds strange, but that was very, happened a lot. Or spending twenty or thirty minutes out of class somewhere and then they get on their phone or, you know, so.
Okay. Could I have a motion to send this on to the full board for approval on consent?
Yes, I move to move the cellphone boost solution total purchase not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency to the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. You're up again, Evan.
I'm up again.
Staff laptops.
This is a big one. So we're excited about this purchase for our replacement of the staff laptops. We typically try and do a four-year cycle on a replacement of all of our staff devices to ensure that their performance is up to standard as well as all the other pieces we need for us, especially focused on things like cybersecurity. We've actually pushed this deployment out an extra year just due to funding constraints that we were looking at. Luckily, we've overbuilt the devices. Credit to my team for putting in the specs that they've lasted to this point pretty well, but they are seeing their age. And so it is time to make that replacement with the devices. So after some extensive testing, and actually, we called it a staff laptop tour, where we went to just about every building and offered teaching staff and any other staff in those buildings opportunity to come see which devices we were looking at for potential replacement. We've landed on looking at the HP Elite X360 Flip Laptop, which is actually essentially the same laptop that we have, just the newer version. So it would be an upgrade from the current model, but they'll see very similar kind of specs and situation. We received a lot of positive feedback from the staff. They like touchscreen, do not take touchscreen away from any employee. They love to touch that screen, so that was something we kept on. These also will still have the ability for their 360, meaning you can flip them all the way around, turn them into a tablet PC if needed for mobility purposes. But we made sure to look at an updated processor and a serious increase in RAM to hopefully meet the needs of all the processing that needs to happen with products. Now, most of the things are online, but as many of us know, when you're running a browser such as Chrome and you have a hundred tabs open, you need some serious processing power to keep that going. So we're hopeful that we will be able to then deploy these devices and have them last for a minimum another four years, but likely stretching on beyond that. What happens to our current devices is those that are still in working order and functioning, we move down to what's called a level two deployment, so they don't just go away or get e-recycled. We repurpose those and those become devices available for non-teaching staff that don't necessarily have a primary use for a computer initially, but we find do need one, putting together carts for mobile usage. So the computers go to waste. They'll be in rotation for us for a significant amount of time past this for the ones that, like I said, are still functional and have all their working parts. And what'll be nice about that is because they're so similar, they'll integrate with our existing systems, like our docking stations in the classroom and the current network settings we have, pretty flawlessly. So it'll be nice to have both of those almost on the same level. So it's our recommendation to purchase these laptops from Sea High Computer Products for a total contract not to exceed two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. This figure includes a fifteen percent contingency and will be funded from our technology bond allocation.
And the fifteen percent contingency is we don't get guaranteed pricing until we actually place the order and there's concern about tariff. So we increase that just so that we don't have to come back to the board when we actually place the order after the board meeting.
All of our new invoices come with the nice little tagline, no pricing is guaranteed due to economic uncertainty and tariff pricing, unfortunately, so.
So does Sea High have these in stock right now, or do they have to order these and bring them in?
They will be built to order.
They're built to order for us.
Global tariffs.
What's the estimated delivery time if you place the order right after the board meeting?
No later than mid-July and hopefully sooner.
Okay, that's good. Summer deployment.
Yep, so then we'd be working on getting those final imaged and opportunities for staff to pick up devices in the summer if they're available. And then as well as scheduling times for us, the staff are coming back in August to swap out their existing laptops with the new ones. But again, in the similarities, one nice feature we have too is your old laptop is not going to immediately shut off once we deploy the new one, so we have, you know, a little bit of leeway there to get all those devices swapped out with staff when it's convenient.
You kind of answered the question, but your, the, the goal is every four years you swap these out, is that right? Sometimes stretch it a little bit longer.
Yeah, that's, that's our, yeah, ideal, just with the typical life cycle of technology and trying to make sure exactly we keep up with that. This one, because like I said, we do try and do a little bit of what we call overbuild to make them a little bit more robust. So it wasn't a big stretch to, to push them a little bit longer and we anticipate the same with this model. But yeah, in, in the perfect world, we can do that, new and fresh every four years.
Because we also do plan to use them for a minimum of eight years, because after their four years as a level one with teaching staff and they, we still plan to use them for an additional four years as a level two device. So we build, build them upfront with an anticipation of at least an eight-year life.
Got it, got it, got it.
One last question. I know this is hardware, but in terms of the software that then is placed on these, are there new licensing requirements and expenses that we can anticipate?
So there won't be any additional license, the operating system is, comes as part of the package of buying the laptop. Everything else that we're doing right now is already in place in the sense of cloud based with our Google products, so we accrue for those costs separately. That's just kind of our constant expenses. We don't anticipate any kind of additional software costs with these laptops at this time that will have to incur.
Assuming these are Windows-based, you're not? All right, any other?
Well, I just have, I just have a couple of comments. I mean, it's, it's a big chunk of change, you know, two and a quarter million dollars, you know, but I appreciate the memo and I appreciate to keep up with the demands of today's technology-driven, driven curriculum and the positive feedback from staff. You know, I, I really appreciate these memos and I sometimes wonder if the public would also like to read some of these memos, because I, and it is, I think, pretty good. So currently not shared with the public, but I would encourage us to maybe consider doing that. And my other comment is just a heads up to my colleagues that the Sustainability Committee be bringing a suggestion to reduce our, our paper use at the board level, maybe at administration level. So if there's, if any of these other computers need a home, like my, that's why I have to plug my computer in, because it dies all the time. So if, if any of these older computers are looking for a home, I'd, I'd take one to help reuse our paper printing of agendas and whatnot. But I support this motion and I'll make a motion to move this on to, it's a lot of money. What do you want to do? You want to put it on discussion?
Generally, the past has been, I'm all giving you the past.
What do you want to do, Scott?
Over a million dollars we've put on the full agenda for discussion.
Okay.
Again.
And I, yeah. And sometimes those things that we do as part of our bond every time, like the bus purchase didn't go on discussion because it's just something that is part of our program.
I'm comfortable putting this actually on consent, just because it is a, I mean, every, you know, four or so years, this is just a technology thing. I mean, like you said, anyone that has technology knows that they kind of die after a while, but I'm comfortable with whatever you guys decide, either way.
I, I am too with consent, you know, and if we can include this memo in it so the public can read it in the full board packet, I'd, I'd like that. So with that, I'll make a motion to move the staff laptop purchase not to exceed two million two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which includes a fifteen percent contingency to the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, one last question before we vote. I noticed that this is not a competitively bid. This comes out of a buying consortium, am I assuming that's correct?
It does.
Okay. I would also recommend per tie suggestion. I'm used to with board committees that the, the packet is included online so that if the general public wants to see the detail, they can see the detail. I mean, I, I don't think anybody normally goes into that, but at least that information's there so that if they come and are visitors, they at least have the same information we do in front of us. And it's just electronic, you know?
Actual, maybe, but for the actual board meeting, it's included in that packet.
Yeah, the, whatever the board members are getting, at least it's available to somebody who might want to come.
I think there's a different thought here, though. So we, we put it all in there for the board meeting, you know, from that element for people to come.
Right.
But generally, the committee meeting, we don't because we don't know what you guys, if you want to pass it on, not this, that. That's been standard practice, but that would be a change to do it in the committee packets.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, we're sitting with a bunch of empty chairs right now, but if somebody wanted to come to this and had this information, they'd at least be able to ask all the questions if they wanted to.
So if we move to the, if we move the item to like the consent calendar, it is included into the full board packet?
The full board packet, right.
That's right. Or if we move it to discussion, it's included in the full board packet currently?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just something I'm used, if you guys don't do it and it's a hassle to do that, then.
I, I'm sitting here talking to Julie. I thought we always did. I had no idea that the memos were online.
I don't.
Because I don't do that part.
Yeah.
And it seems like it would be more simple just to have one packet, because I know, like Tammy's like, which ones for the board and which ones for the, like.
Let me check with Tammy, you know, from that element and, you know, see from that standpoint. I know like presentation and stuff, and I don't know if maybe this one just slipped from that standpoint, but.
Yeah. Well, the presentation piece is harder because we're usually working on it, but these are usually submitted to Tammy in advance and I don't have an issue with that.
I think it's really, someone spends a lot of time writing these good memos, Evan, and I'm like, well, here's the rationale, here's the things and.
Let's just, by the way, it sounds like there's a pretty decent consensus to put it in, make sure, so we'll have them in the, in the, the, all of the items for the committee for moving forward.
I just think that's.
It's all ready.
Yep.
I don't hear the argument about, I don't understand why you're doing this, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this on to the full board for approval on consent, is, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Scott?
Yes.
You're not voting, can you vote, please?
Yes, I did say yes.
Okay.
I'm writing it down as you.
I don't.
Technically, if he did it, he still got outvoted, but.
Yeah, I'm still curious anyway.
Okay, Travis Heights Classroom Audio, Evan again.
Speaking in. Yeah, so we're excited about this project as well, in, in kind of collaboration with the fact that Travis Heights is adding three classrooms this summer. We started to look at what those classroom needs were from a technology AV perspective. One of those being the sound, we refer to it as the teacher voice lift system, so the microphone that not only will broadcast the teacher's voice, so they don't have to yell or raise their voice to be clearly heard by the students, and also then typically will connect in with just the AV audio visual that's going on, so that all the students can hear what's going on on the boards or presented in front of the class. So in looking at what we were going to do for those three classrooms, Travis Heights in general is in need of an upgrade.
Can I just, for one second, we have two new board members that don't know the pilots that you've been doing over the last couple of years as it relates to classroom instruction, technology and the information you're gathering, I think that would be really helpful for them to know, like, how we got here.
Oh, God.
If you don't mind giving some background on that.
I don't mind at all.
Right.
So what Christine's referring to is district-wide, we've, we're in need of a kind of an update with our classroom audio visual equipment. We're in various states by building on basically when they were built, kind of, and refurbished, that they might have different equipment in there. So we decided to bring together a group of teachers, we call them our Classroom AV Research and Development Group. So we put out applications for teachers across the district to apply to basically volunteer to test different equipment that we would have installed in their rooms to provide us feedback and, and come to a hopeful consensus on what the next iteration of kind of updating that classroom audio visual equipment would be. So that's taken place over this past year where we did install seven rooms?
We did seven rooms.
Seven rooms, thank you, sorry. Seven rooms with a variety of different equipment, which the main focuses were the visuals, so different types of projectors and interactive panels. What I just referred to is the voice lift, right, so the audio component of that, different options to upgrade that. And really, the, the only other piece, and it focuses mainly on, on elementary, was document cameras and the new age replacement for the overhead projector, how they're displaying content up on the board. And so, like I said, throughout that year, we've had those teachers testing that equipment out, providing feedback. We've provided opportunities, open houses for other staff to come take a look at what's going on in those classrooms, hopefully kind of speak to the teachers. We recorded a video to share out so that the teachers in that pilot program could share their experiences with the staff. We are going to be in the process of kind of, we've talked to them several times, obviously, as they still have the equipment in there, but the pilot is essentially over, but they're still obviously using that equipment, but to bring them back and get a, again, true consensus on the different pieces they feel like are the best fit for the district, so that we can come back to the board and kind of discuss what we would like to do, which will be a pretty big project about doing a cycle replacement of all that classroom AV throughout the district. So that's a kind of our technology separate pet project that we're very excited about, because it's just needed. That equipment is needed and upgraded, especially in certain buildings that are older. And so as we take these opportunities with, say, a Trav Heights and new classroom additions, as opposed to just putting in the standard or what we had before, we're trying to make sure that we're following in line with what the pilot is speaking to, meaning what the teachers wanted to see and what would work well. So within those three classrooms, we're actually doing interactive panels, as opposed to we're, we've been doing projectors and short-throat projectors to do that, and then also with the voice lift system, we looked at this one from Audio Enhancement. We also looked at a different product called, from Lightspeed Systems, but with the Audio Enhancement, we got really good feedback on any new and improved voice lift, to be honest, so we like the potential growth of Audio Enhancement for some other security features that can be built onto that in the future as we look at that. But also just the product itself and how well it works and it's simple, right, it's two microphones, four speakers, a better amplifier that will, again, lift that teacher's voice so that the students can just kind of pleasantly hear what they're saying and a teacher doesn't have to strain. So kind of, as Christine said, that's dovetailed into this, so now that we have this opportunity, looking at those three classrooms and with the current state of Trav Heights, we felt like we'd be remiss not to just replace the entire building's sound systems in the classrooms, meaning the rest of those classrooms currently have various states of older equipment, some not even in functional order, that we would like to not just bring up three new classrooms with three new voice systems, but also push that through the rest of the building and also give us a great kind of first look at what that process will look like, as like we said, we look at the bigger picture of replacing and doing all the classroom AV throughout the district. So what we've landed on for Trav Heights is, as I mentioned, it's Audio Enhancement Sentinel System. We feel like it's going to best fit the needs of, of what the teachers are doing there. We also acquired this using the HPS contract, which does satisfy the bid requirements for the state of Michigan. And it's our recommendation to purchase the Audio Enhancement Sentinel System, which will include installation from AVI Systems for a total contract award not to exceed fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency should we need any extra equipment or, or things, but hopefully not.
Evan, is this, this is for the three new classrooms and the, the whole building?
Yes.
Okay, 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 I was confused.
I'm looking at, it doesn't, we, we li, we like standardization, so I don't know why I'm struggling today. We like standardization and so if, if teachers move from classroom to, from year to year, it's nice to have the same equipment.
Okay.
A couple of things to note, I think it's important during the pilot that we were very particular about making sure we had a various range of teachers as it relates to their capabilities with technology, so that we weren't just getting some high flyers that are very tech-savvy saying this is the equipment we'd like to use. We also made sure that we got some staff that weren't really tech-savvy, so that we could get their feedback as well. This is something that Evan and I feel really strongly we should be doing for the whole district. That's a very big price tag that might need to be talked about in the next bond. I'm not sure in his annual allocations, he would be able to do that, it's probably at least a half a million, by the time we do it, maybe six, seven hundred thousand dollars for the whole district, correct?
Five million.
Five million. Five million, oh, wow.
Yeah. I would say likely a safe estimation to replace the entire classrooms in the district with all the upgraded AV.
So that, that very much would not be an annual allocation, that would be a district capital project improvement.
Correct.
And also we'll say, when they had the pilot classrooms, Evan and I worked a little bit on when we had large-scale PD to be, like, to know, like, when we did a, a large PD in West Senior High, how do we highlight some of those pilot classrooms? How do we get some of the teachers who aren't involved to go walk through and look at some of that? So we did a little bit of a combo on taking advantage of some of those times to try to get as many of our staff as possible to see it, even if they're not involved in the pilot, so.
And I'll just add that when we do renovations and additions, we, we, we talk a lot and build in the new technology into our additions and renovations, so we're not going back after the fact to replace some things.
I have a couple of questions. If we're looking at a half million dollars, that would in essence do ten buildings.
Five million, sorry.
No, no, I think he, he's just talking about Travis Heights right now.
It's only fifty-six thousand.
Yeah.
But I mean, if I take this and exponentially multiply for eventually running this district wide, how do you get to roughly a half million dollars?
I, I'm wrong on that, I was wrong, it's five million.
Okay, that's.
Five mil, five million is about an estimated cost we'd have to rework it.
Taken it times ten and adding a few, and that's not right.
Essentially, what would happen is working again, like, once we identify that kind of desired equipment, we'll, we'll work to put together a package that are, you know, estimated cost per room. And then we'd take that and multiply it obviously by the amount of classrooms within the district. So the five million dollars is a very rough estimation from previous conversations, but with cost of things and, and anticipating what we're looking at, it's probably still well within the ballpark. I wouldn't anticipate it being significantly less, unfortunately, although I'd love to see that. But yeah, as we meet with those guys, we will actually be putting together a true, kind of like I said, accurate estimation based on room costs.
So we're sort of embarking potentially on, eventually, a five million dollar investment, because now we're getting into this equity issue?
That's our goal.
Okay.
I just want to, like, the word equity, and I don't know, I don't want to nitpick about the word equity, but I, I think what we mean by equal, right? So you want it to be equal, the same at every building, right?
I look at it more as standardization, same equipment, all the staff know how to operate it, our techs know how to.
I don't want to nitpick, but it comes, like, we talk about gyms or robotics at both, but we're talking about the same, you know, equity, at least from my seat, has to do with meeting need, right? So I just, I just want to talk about, we want it to be the same.
In, in that aspect, I would agree with you, and another aspect that would give it where it is equity, is that we have kids in those classrooms that maybe are, you know, hard of hearing.
That's fine, but that's why we want it to be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want it to be the same.
It gets to equity when you have the same of those kids in the classroom.
Right.
Having the same opportunity.
There, maybe they need extra technology, because that need is higher, so we get more, and I, again, I don't, that's a, I don't want to be a grammar police.
I will tell you, it's pretty neat, I've had the chance to see a lot of the demonstrations of this and, you know, for kids that, you know, maybe that can't hear as well, or, you know, rely on that, what ends up happening if a kid can't hear as well and they say that to the teacher, not to a fault of a teacher, but they end up yelling almost. And, and the kid that feels like I'm being yelled at.
Yeah.
You know, in that aspect, it, it, it's really a game changer in the classroom environment. So when you have this and it literally is designed, you know, to make sure that that kid's able to, to do that, it is amazing the difference in the teacher even, just having the ability just to talk, you know, and, and that element, but yet the kid's still be able to hear, it's, it's a, it's a really neat thing.
Yeah, these, the Audio Enhancement Company is actually, was founded by a mother of children with hearing disabilities and was designed for that, there's a four-speaker system in the classroom, so no matter where you are in the classroom, that voice isn't necessarily just made louder, but it's amplified throughout the room, so that no matter where you are in the room, that sound fills the room, so you can speak just in a normal voice and it's not that is really loud for everybody. It's just enhanced throughout the space so that.
Is that what we have in here? Because it sounds really good back there.
We don't have the audio enhancement, but there is a speaker.
We have, we have something that's not that level.
It's a different level.
I wouldn't bring the audio enhancement people in here, right, now to be honest with you.
It's helpful for kids who don't have a hearing, you know, situation, but very helpful for those who do.
So I'll make a motion that we go ahead.
It doesn't matter.
Travis Heights Classroom Audio for a total contract award not to exceed fifty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two, which includes a ten percent contingency to our next board meeting's consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, two quick questions, one for Paul. Obviously, if we start to enhance audio in a particular classroom, there's going to be sound transfer to other classrooms. Are we at least accounting for that as we start to build classrooms that there's some ability to soundproof?
We have sound enhancement in classrooms now, just not this new capability in the construction of the buildings. There's some transference you get with open doors and open windows and, and that kind of thing, but room to room, it's.
These systems are built to kind of be self-contained and kind of, speaking off Winnie's point, it's, it's not really just a megaphone made to just blast sound. It really truly does fill the room with the sound of someone just speaking as opposed to having to raise their voice, so. I think they've come a long way, we've had system, we have systems like this in place of, of a much lower quality that still do an okay job. And now we're at a point where, like we said, some of these newer opportunities just do a really nice job. Teachers who say they've never needed to use one, once we give them one, we had some of these in the pilot group, I will not be able to take it away from them, right, they, they will not go back. And then same thing to John's point about with the student, and also in addition to maybe not feeling yelled at, you don't have to move them just so they can hear, so it gives them that flexibility to be anywhere in the room and feel like they can hear. And we don't hear, say, from the pilot buildings, any issues of that sound, feeling like it's, it's bleeding over into the other classrooms.
And, and typically, like, classrooms are designed so that you're not transferring sound from corridors to classroom, from classroom to classroom. They're, they're designed and built that way.
Okay, and I'm assuming, is this a mic teacher then? In other words, that's basically what we're talking about?
It's a landowner.
It's a two-mic system, so there is a pendant mic for the teachers that they will wear, and then there's also a handheld mic for the students to use in these.
So we keep track of that.
And they've done really well in the pilot classrooms and the teachers really like the fact that the students have their own mics so that they don't have to share the one that they're using, so that that can stay with them and then they can hand off and the kids can hand the student mic around, and we haven't had any issues so far with that getting lost.
Well, we have a motion and a second to move this on to the board for approval. I'm consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Informational items, capital projects, you're up the hook, Evan.
Good job.
I'll be back, I'm sure.
All right, here we are, Trav Heights Elementary, the only thing that we've really got going right now, other than the performance management contract. Footings, foundations, underground utilities are going in, the masons will be on site the end of this week to put their first course of maestery in, so we can pour interior slabs. Once those are in place, things are really going to start flying. Their steel should be coming in the next, before the end of the month, and then they'll start erecting the steel. And then you'll see, things will just start flying, we're a, I don't want to say it, we're not, I don't want to talk about schedule.
Yeah.
No, you can't, turn off this microphone. You get to turn off this microphone.
The, the nice thing with the classroom additions is if they don't get done before school starts, we can make it work, it's not as inconvenient. The cafeteria, on the other hand, absolutely has to be done before we occupy in September, so.
And we're making, we've gone over the cafeteria, we're going to actually start the cafeteria before school gets out now. Because they've done all of this, they're ready to move over to the front. So we're going through some steps at the front of the building to make sure the students are safe, can still use the car line drop off. Work out front there to get, so we can get in there, do footings and foundations and get that piece of work, of work going. Yeah, this is, this is where we're at here.
And this is two classrooms plus cafeteria?
Three classrooms.
Three classrooms. Three, three additional classrooms, a workroom on the end of the building, there's a couple of rooms getting interior renovations, the music room and the art room wall that separates them from getting done, and then the music room's being renovated, cafeteria's being expanded.
And John, this is probably something to deal with in strategic planning, but has this impacted the reason for these additions? Is it open enrollment that's creating this, it's the indigenous population around the Travis Heights School?
No.
Growing?
You know, it's just, I think that it, it, you know, it really is, well, we have gotten a few school of choice, which is a great thing. You know, this building, when I came five years ago, I can tell you, one of our first conversations Christine and I had was worried about keeping the building open, we were at less than two hundred kids.
Yeah, one seventy.
One seventy, and we're over three hundred now. And so, you know, I think that it's a few things, a testament, I think, to the administrative, the team and staff. Think, you know, Brian and his team have done a wonderful job in that building. I think, secondly, housing in the, in the Travis Heights neighborhood is still one of the more, I wouldn't use the word affordable ever still with housing here, but, you know, entry-level, housing that's available in the, in the area. So you just are getting more families with kids, you know, I think in the, in the, in the boundary within Travis Heights. And so, you know, all of that together, also with, you know, we, we've been fortunate to get some increased capacity for staff with, with mental health, with, you know, all of the different needs that our kids have in all of our buildings, but especially Travis Heights, there's just not a single spot, cubby, anything left in that building. There's just not a single spot, cubby, anything left in that building. To to put anybody. We've, you know, we've even had to think about taking part of the media center and having staff in there. You know, to be able to absorb, so it is just with that growth, it is just continuing to have that need for that space.
At one point, we had the shared space with the ISD.
And still do.
It's, it's not really shared, they own half of the building. Um, because they did the construction, so, and they just added on. Yeah, they added on. They also expanded the parking lot as part of that, that project because they're.
I didn't realize they actually owned part of it, so we can't really move them out. To another location.
If they don't own it, it's like a hundred year lease, so essentially they own.
This kinda goes back to that thought about. You know, that building really doesn't, I mean, you could go into the woods more, but you know, from a, and and how. How big do you wanna, you know, like, you know, in the future, Oak Park sitting there is a conversation for the board to have. You know, and so there's just a lot, you know, the 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 lafranier buildout, that is Traverse Heights boundary. Um, you know, and what's happening out there that could impact, that, you know, we'll see in a few years what that ends up meaning. You know, for us, so a lot of what ifs in the future with that.
Yeah, like I said, it may be strategic finally, I just was curious.
We're also running some special programs there, so we have two classes that are overseen by N M C A A. We have a Head Start and a G S R P that they run. We also have an E E C S E program there, so, um, that's a few classrooms with, you know, lower numbers of students, but. Those programs are helpful because a lot of those students are residents of Traverse Heights.
E C S E.
Um, early childhood specialized. Sorry. We we actually have a document of our. Tried to start creating that over the years.
That's one every meeting.
Um, the only other real construction we have going on right now is the performance management project, um, lighting. Plumbing, the building envelope work is done, except for some punch list stuff, uh, to go around and check. There, if that continues on, and that's gonna be going on for quite a while. Boiler replacements will be starting soon. With the shutdown of the boiler systems around the district, so.
This is part of the train contract?
Train Performance Management Contract. And this is strictly for your entertainment, um, Julie's gotta run it. Hit the full screen there. Little time lapse of the. Project out at West Senior. So while this is going on, right now, uh, waiting for the end of the school year. For these projects to start, they're under contract, uh, the renovations out there at West Senior High for the pedestrian. And circulation improvements, the W- West Senior High restroom project. Uh, and the relocation of the Northwest Ed classrooms within West Senior. We're also waiting, uh, for school to get out to do locker replacements at Blair and Cortade. And then there's bleacher replacements around the district at 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 different locations, uh, the biggest one being at East Middle. Uh, we're gonna be starting the, uh, storage facility at maintenance here shortly, uh, kickoff meetings next week. And then in design right now, of course, the central grade, central high, uh, the Saban renovations and all the music programs are on the boards right now.
Can you talk a little bit about your planning meeting for West Senior High circulation and what, what that's gonna look like in the coordination with the county and the lights?
Sure, right now, uh, the county had gotten a, a grant. From, I'm not sure where they got it from, state or federal, to replace the lights, uh, at, um, Long Lake and. Hurtner Road right there, the dual light system, and it was a safety grant, uh, issue. They've been trying to get rid of the second light there for a long time, so we're coordinating with them. They're gonna do that piece of the project. And work while we redo the entryway. Right now, this summer, I wish I had a slide for you that could show the plan, but. I do, but I can't get it up there. They, uh, we're gonna use the east most entrance off of Long Lake. It's gonna be the in and out this summer, so it's gonna be two-way traffic on that side. And then the main entrance that goes in on the west side right now, it's gonna be closed to all the construction traffic. And that's gonna wait, it's gonna be that way all summer. So, and we'll have all kinds of signage out there, and the county's gonna redo the lights, the controls on them for us. While the project's going on, so that it it directs traffic that way as well. Uh, and then as we get through this into the summer, at the end of the summer, when school starts again in the fall. That main entrance to the west will be the only entrance off of Long Lake. The other one will be completely closed. And we'll have traffic routed in and, uh, it'll, circulation will still be the same as it is now. You go in and around to the. Well, around to the right. But we've got it all mapped out, uh, and it's gonna be a two-phase project. So we'll do the second phase of this, which is the, uh, east side of the campus next year, next summer.
It's the Cedar Run. Is it Cedar Run Road?
We're not touching that out there. That stays the same. Well, when you come in from the backside where the athletic fields are, eventually that roundabout will be gone. That'll just be a T intersection. And then, um, the first phase of this is the west side parking areas. Parent drop off all of that.
And the concept was, is just, we were deathly afraid of trying to chew too much and have it go into the school year. And with, you know, the rate that we've, we've had with construction. Do half this summer while we have the ability and get into school year, and then the following summer do the other half of it.
Paul, I was at Traverse Heights yesterday and I saw on the preschool playground a sign talking about the energy efficiency. And the dollar amount that we're saving annually, which I believe was somewhere around three hundred eighty grand a year. Is, which I thought was great, cuz I stopped and read it, cuz I didn't know. Um, is that happening at at our other buildings, signage like that?
We have eight signs up, yeah, sorry, I worked on that one with Rayanne. We have eight signs up. They had the option to, um, put a sign at every building. But we really struggle with any ground mounted signs, so I'd ask them for the fence signs.
I I like, I don't like the ground.
Excuse me.
But it was really nice. I just thought, I stopped and read it.
So wherever we could put one on a fence that you could actually see it, we have one on Thirteenth Street here. So wherever it made sense, it was actually visible, we put them up. So we worked with trying to get.
I appreciate that. Three hundred eighty grams a lot every year.
Oh, okay, those are the train signs.
I saw trains logo on there, so maybe they're paying for it, but anyways.
I'm sure we did, but, you know.
Either way. I like.
Alright, anything further from Paul?
Well, that's me.
I just questioned on Traverse Heights, there used to be a tags softball program that ran over there, is that still operating?
Still there.
Okay.
We had to relocate their shed and that when we expanded the parking lot two years ago. But the, the fields are still there.
Finance, Christine?
Yeah, I, um, I don't really have anything, which is a good thing, cuz I can't seem to make good words today, so. They, we, you know, we got an update from M S B O with a link for some updates from the Senate and House. There's no information there, so. Um, I I don't know if you've heard anything different, John.
Yeah, I mean, the Senate came out with their version and I think it's got problems, um, because. They're going off of revenues that were anticipated months ago. And with tariffs and all that, I think there's a whole lot of question marks. So there will be what's called the May consensus revenue, uh, conference. Uh, May sixteenth, I think it is. I don't expect the House to come up with their version until after that. Uh, but, you know, I'd, I'd love to tell you that the Senate one is real. I mean, they have more money in the foundation than the governor had. They put fifty percent more in at risk, they, um, put a another good chunk in school safety and mental health. I mean, all the things they did were great things. I just, I think there's a lot of questions out there though, whether that kinda revenue is available. So, you know, I I wouldn't, it's nothing to base a judgment off of right now, unfortunately. So once we, I think once cr- the the crack happens in May, that's what they will base their target numbers for the actual budget on. So.
I saw something in the paper yesterday, was it M E A, somebody's proposing something that would create. More income for teachers?
That is the Senate version, has, has, you know, components of that in it, um.
And smaller class sizes.
And smaller classes, so it, you know, it just, it depends on how it all rolls on, and again. The revenues, you know, it's a billion dollars more than last year's budget. And I think a lot of people are going, so you think we're gonna have a billion more than we had a year ago, you know?
April's revenue was down.
April's revenue was down, and so, I'd say, I'd say, I think that. You know, and and I could tell you from, you know, talking to some folks in Lansing yesterday. I think, it sounds like there was an internal debate within the Senate to do this or not do this. And I think that it was mixed, but they wanted to make a statement of their supports of what they wanna see supported. But I think they recognize that some of the numbers and the revenues that were put in are not realistic.
Is this along political lines too?
Well, the Senate's controlled the, by the Democrats, and so you're the leadership and the chairs are are democratic. You have Republicans control the House, and so we've seen the governor's version. And and the Senate version, and, you know, has a lot more money than the governor's version. The governor's version was based off of an economy four months ago. So I just, like I said, I I will not feel comfortable till after crack and kinda seeing what that has said. And the, and if the House version kinda comes, I think that their revenue will be, I think, more in line now. What their, um, what their, um, priorities are. You know, maybe questionable from that standpoint, or maybe they're the same, you know, but, and then from May through, hopefully, the end of June. They'll debate it, get us a budget, but, you know, and then the other piece that's mixed in this still. Is a roads package that is literally mu- it's, it's, it's confusing things all up completely. Cuz it, in all of that conversation, it changes the revenue stream of what fuels the, literally. The, the, the school aid fund from fuel tax. That the House Speaker wants to remove and replace that school funding with just regular general funds from the tax base. Which has some people nervous because it's more of a fluctuating revenue stream, so we'll, uh. So the overall goes back to, you know. Keep watching and we'll see you, you know, sometime mid-May to maybe see if we have a little bit clearer picture.
So we'll talk at our next Board Finance and Operations about some of the assumptions we'll take, because we will have to adopt a budget before we know anything. Um, we prepare documentation in our books, you know, at least a month in advance of the, the board meeting, so. Um, we'll have to adopt a budget and we'll, we'll share with you what our predictions are and what we feel comfortable with as far as risk.
On the topic of, um, budgets and money, I was lucky enough to attend the, the mission-based budgeting process. Wes was there with Traverse Heights, and I would encourage Scott and Sarah and anybody, I mean, of us, our colleagues who have never attended one of those meetings to do so, is very, very good. I learned a lot in forty-five minutes. Um, so thanks for being there, Wes.
Yeah, thanks, Wes. I keep saying that.
Everybody, anytime that somebody had a question, it's like, ask Wes. Wes had the number like, like. Like Rain Man, just boom.
Alright, upcoming district purchases, Ms. Thomas Hill.
Yeah, so I always like to review this so that if there's any concerns from board members, we know in advance before we start working on projects. Um, a couple of changes I think that will take place, so obviously the May ones are in front of you today. Um, Saban renovations, that's actually gonna come to July board, unfortunately. Um, with the July holiday, with Memorial Day, and getting bids out, making sure they have enough time to bid on things. Um, we're gonna push that to the July, I think, fourteenth board meeting. Um, the Traverse City High School Bridge Updates, Paul is bugging, uh, Gaslin- is it Gaslin or Edvinson?
Uh, both.
Okay. He he's pushing them to get us, um, renderings of the fix, so we do have some erosion issues in the, in the creek. Um, and we need, um, uh, civil documents and structural documents to, to make those changes, which we need to do over the summer, so we're pushing them on that.
John, Bob Eagle too?
It will.
So we don't have an estimated cost for that. We're still working on engineering and renderings. Um, virtual infrastructure server sounds super exciting, and Evan will be bringing that in June or July.
Will you be here in person or virtual?
Maybe just to stick with the theme, not virtually.
Uh, Central, um, High School Greenhouse, we already went out for bid. This one actually costs substantially more than what was originally anticipated. We did receive a grant. We've applied for, did we submit the application yet for the new grant?
I turned it over to.
Is that the T, is that the T C?
The unfortunate thing with that is their determination time is a couple months out, so. You know, we may, may need to have a conversation about how long the contractor's willing to hold the pricing and if, if we're willing to front load that and get the grants after the fact. So we'll need to probably talk about that soon. I asked Paul just yesterday to reach out to the contractor to see how long he'd hold his pricing, the, the low bid. Um, so working on, uh, some more funding for that, and I do know that they, uh, Central High School reached out to the original grant provider. To see if there was more funds available on that grant, so we're, we're working on that. The elevator upgrades, um, Paul's been digging into this, uh, with the facility staff, and I think there's, it's not gonna be anywhere near two hundred fifty thousand, but we're working on it. There's some new requirements that come into play, I think, by twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight.
That, that we're trying to work on, so.
Deadline. The only one that we have to do immediately, right away this summer is put phone lines into the, uh. And their man lifts, they're not full elevators, they have lifts at West Middle School. That's gonna cost about eight thousand dollars.
So we'll work on the others if there's safety features that have to be added, but it's not an immediate cost, so that one probably will. Go down to the bottom of, of the list, but stay with a, a TBD as far as timing goes. Um, we're gonna have some renovations here at Glen Loomis, uh, to get ready for Central High School. We need to do some.
Central Middle School, or Central Elementary?
Great.
Wow.
Can somebody else just do this? For Central Grade to come over, so we need some kitchen renovations. It, it hasn't been operated as a kitchen in quite some time. Um, and, uh, making sure that we're able to, um, house the number of students and provide, uh, the level of service that the food service provides. Um, and then also Central High School, the effluent renovations to house curriculum superintendent and communications. Um, it, it will be minor, much like we did here with some temporary offices. Um, it, it won't be as substantial, but same thing is here. We, we need to tear down the temporary offices here. We need to build new ones over there so that we can. Um, house staff over there. Uh, bottle filling stations, this is a big one, um, that Rayanne's been working on. We have a lot of new requirements coming through as it relates to. Um, lead testing and, uh, requirements of having, uh, drinking water available. Um, there's ratios now that are, um, it, it's kind of ironic, I saw this coming as soon as we had our first session on this, but. Um, they have a requirement, uh, one to one hundred students. You have to have a drinking bottle filler in the building, and it doesn't, there's no. Um, rhyme or reason as to where it's located, you just have to have them available. So if you have three hundred students, you have to have at least three of them available. Well, the, the law actually says that you have to have one to one hundred occupants, and, and I've challenged them all along, how could you say that's just students? When we have staff and volunteers and, so now they're going back to, no, no, it's occupants, so now. All of Rayanne's ratios are changing, and she's still working on that. Um, we've gotten one grant already to help provide some equipment. Um, the unfortunate thing is there's, this is an unfunded mandate that we're, you know, it's great, um, it, it's great to move this way. We already have a lot of things in place and a lot of bottle, bottle fillers anyway. Um, it's just going to be a big chunk of money because installation most likely will not ever be funded by the state, so. Um, and in some places, you know, you have to get electrical, you have to get water. Um, so that, that's something she's working on, um, you might, well, um, Erica and Ty might recall, we did have our working plan. Um, already, I, I shared with Board Finance, uh, quite some time ago that we have our working plan ready to go. That was required, I think, by the end of January of this year. Um, and that's an ongoing working document that's live, anybody can look at. Um, but we're just, we're really trying to get more guidance. Eagle's not really clear. It's, it's one of those things that legislatively became. A requirement, and now they're trying to work out the logistics, and so it's, it's a challenge.
Is this the combination drinking fountain bottle filler?
And then everyone we install, there's A D A requirements, so it's just, it's not just so simple as add bottle fillers to your building, so you have enough for your occupants, so. And the lead testing, we, we're gonna have to go through every classroom, um, and, um, most likely cap off. Um, the actual bubblers that are in the classroom and make those hand washing stations only. Um, because every station that is consumable, any, any station that's consumable has to be lead tested every year. And we simply don't have the staff to do that if we have consumable water in every classroom. So we'll be, uh, capping off any, uh, bubblers and providing signs that indicate that the sinks are just for hand washing. And that's the thing too, signage is required. It's a pretty big package. So that's, that's one of the big projects that, uh, Rayanne is working on, and she's getting one of her team members actually certified to be a tester, a water, lead tester. So we have somebody in-house.
And then the difficult part that Christine is, is just kind of not skipping over, but. Legislation for this doesn't agree with building code. Legislation for this doesn't agree with building code on these issues, there's. Fight each other, so it makes it even more difficult.
It's a, it's a challenge, and a lot of districts are just kind of waiting it out, because at, at this point, there's nothing to be held accountable to, and. We're waiting for that final answer, what exactly are we supposed to be doing, you don't really wanna jump the gun and start pla- replacing things, because even the type of devices being deba- debated, so. Um, you certainly don't wanna go ahead and get your ratios up and then find out all of the bottle fillers you put in actually don't meet the requirement, cause there are requirements on the filler itself. So, it's a challenge, it's, it's kind of a wait and see, but also we're just trying to keep up with what we need to do. Um, we, over the summer, I know that um, Rayanne hired some bus drivers to do an audit, we have to actually have an audit of every single. Place water is provided, even our um, slop sinks in our custodial closets, we'll have to have a hand washing station only, not consumable, so. It, it's a very big project. Um, West Middle School renovations, we have our first meeting at West Middle School with the principal and the staff to actually start design on May. Thank you, um, and then uh, Central High School renovations, the architect team is starting design, and we'll get our user group um, back together. Once they have some things to actually take a look at and provide feedback, Central Grade renovations, same, uh, the architects are working on. Uh, some of the things we discussed with some partial demo and how much square feet we actually need to fit, what we need to fit on the first floor, so they're working on that. Uh, before we get any user groups together, we'll, we'll get some actual concepts and designs together that we can actually provide feedback on. But I did uh, provide some timing as to when we think it's coming to bid, so you guys have a sense for, obviously we'll provide updates along. The way, it won't just wait till we, we go to bid and then surprise you with what that number looks like, we'll be providing updates as we go.
And just to be clear, like, the Central High School renovation, that, that, that twenty million is phase one?
It would be this bond, there's no approval.
Of this money, but phase one, just for us, like, the two phases, um, I think the other phase was.
And the team is comfortable working that way, obviously, we would like both phases approved and just plan that way, we have charged the architects with. Providing uh, renderings for both phases so that it's seamless, and we're not necessarily building something where it shouldn't go.
Twenty million for, and then just to be, the, the music, the West Middle, two million, and I know you have a meeting of. Meeting about it, but that does not include the extra space that may or may not happen, and that.
It's the original estimate of how much square feet we think we need.
It says estimated cost, so I get it, and it can, subject to change. Thank you.
So that's where we're at, I, I, we try to um, encourage everybody to get things on here so that you know it's coming several months in advance, so if you have questions or are concerned about a project. We know before we start any kind of designer.
All right, any other items, you have a second public comment, I take it? I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, sometimes we announce the next meeting, or we an- announce the next meeting? And then, and then you adjourn, or, oh, you're asking for a motion to adjourn, okay.
Or we can just adjourn, I know Robert Trues' order doesn't require it, I don't think. The next meeting uh, will be Thursday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, right here at eight fifteen in the morning. Now are we ready to adjourn? Yes, I thank you for adjourn.